Everyone, to our council meeting tonight, we're glad to have you all here with us. Before we start, I want to excuse Councilman Mark Hurd and Dave Erickson, who are out of town, but they're joining us remotely, so they will be, they are going to join us. They'll just be remote for tonight. And we'll go ahead and do, our opening's going to be given by Nolan Erickson.
Gunnel.
Gunnel.
Nolan Gunnel. Sorry, I'm reading and speaking at the same time. It wasn't a good idea. So we'll go ahead and turn the time over to Nolan. Thank you.
I'm going to say my opening comments in the form of a prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we come before thee this day and give thanks for this great country which we live in. We're grateful for the freedoms that it provides us. We recognize the sacrifice of those men and women of previous conflicts and those who served in distant lands today to provide our freedom and peace. We pray blessings upon them, and we recognize their sacrifice. We give thanks for this process we have in this country of listening to constituents and finding out what is best in the process of government. And it is a voice from the citizens who help us in that discussion. We pray that we may be civil in our dialogue tonight, and that we may listen and have an understanding. And we give thanks again for this country and those who serve and protect us. This we pray and ask in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen. If you'll stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nolan. Going in. Okay, we need to have a review and approval of the minutes from October 23rd.
Agenda first?
Oh, okay, first we're going to approve the agenda for tonight. Is that moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, now we'll talk about review and approval of the minutes. And we have three sets of minutes to discuss. Two, we cut two because we don't have the October 30th ones yet.
Madam Chair, I would like to leave approving the October 23rd special meeting because I'm finding some discrepancies in there regarding who was here and the adjournment time.
Yeah, it says adjourned at 7:30.
Yeah. There were three of us who weren't at the meeting, and I don't think that we should be noted as having a nay vote. I think we should just be noted as not being at the meeting. And that was done on, on the review and approval of agenda, the action. And then, as it was mentioned, it says that it adjourned at 7:30. I wasn't here, but I don't think it adjourned that late.
It was a two-minute and six-second meeting.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's, let's clarify that, and we'll approve those later then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So we're only going to approve the October 28th, the meeting, the minutes from the regular council meeting on October 28th. Does someone want to make a motion about that?
I'll move to approve the minutes on October 28th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the October 28th meeting minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, the next on the agenda is the report of the county executive.
I really don't have any appointments or report to give you tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, so the next on the agenda, 6A, we have Jordan Mathis from the Bear River Health Department.
All right, we have two quick items of business. The first is a recommendation from the Board of Health to reappoint Randy Williams to the Board of Health. Just a little context, I've been the health director for about five years. There's only two members on that board that were there when I was hired. We've seen a lot of turnover. Randy was willing to be reappointed, and so we didn't seek any other individuals for that seat to try to. She's also on a statewide board of local boards of health, so we didn't seek any other applicants for that position. But the board does recommend her to the council for consideration for reappointment for three years, starting January 1 of 2026.
Okay, right, does someone want to make a motion on that?
Yes, I will move to reappoint Randy Williams to the Bear River Health Department Board of Health.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointment of Randy Williams, reappointment of Randy Williams to the Board of Health, Board of Directors. Is that what it is?
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Bear River Board of Health.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Okay, then I want to turn some time over to Jonathan. He's over our air quality for a request for utilization of air pollution control fees.
Thank you. Yeah, so today I would like to-
Will you state your name first, please, for the record?
Yes, yes, Jonathan Robinson.
Okay, thank you.
So today, I'd like to come forward to bring up some vehicle emissions assistance programs that either are coming down the pike or that we would be interested in renewing at the Bear River Health Department. The first one is going to be the Beehive Emissions Reduction Plan. So this is something that was facilitated under the 2022 Inflation Reduction Act, allocating funds to various states and entities for air quality improvement purposes. And Utah was fortunate enough to receive approximately $75 million towards the implementation of such emissions reduction programs. EPA received over 300 applications. Utah was one of only 25 of those that was accepted. And so what that enables us to do is bring into place an emissions reduction program specifically towards electrifying vehicles. Next slide. And that is going to be approximately 10 of those $75 million allocated towards that electrification program. The Bear River Health Department is being allocated about $882,000 towards this implementation. The funding must be used by October of 2029, but what this is going to enable us to do is replace vehicles that are currently failing on an emissions test or vehicles that are over a certain age range. Got some more information on that in the coming slides here. This program is going to be greatly advantageous to people who are unable to make the financial obligations for their vehicles. And those who are disadvantaged, those who are marginalized in our community, this will be a fantastic benefit as far as helping to offset some of these in replacing these vehicles. And that's going to be broken down based on the federal poverty index. So anybody who qualifies at 300% or below will be able to receive up to $10,000 for the replacement of their vehicle. The 300% to 400% bracket changes to $7,000, and anyone under 500% would be able to qualify for $4,000. As far as applicants, it's going to be basically just proving the vehicle is yours. You have to be a legal adult, and you will be able to take out a loan. You're also able to stack this program with any other potential incentives. So just bringing the awareness here on this EVRAP program. Can probably skip the next slide here, just talking about the details and stuff there. But the main reason that I would really like to come forward today is to bring up the Vehicle Repair and Replacement Assistance Program. So this is something that we were fortunate to have in place from 2017 to the fund cessation in 2023. During that time, if you go to the next slide here, we were able to assist people in repairing or replacing vehicles. Ninety-six to the current year was eligible for repair assistance, up to a maximum of $1,000 per VIN. And 2003 and older were eligible for replacement of up to $5,000. And the vehicle had to be indicating that was currently failing on an emissions test. Meet a couple other guidelines there. Go to the next slide. The success with that program, we were able to show that between 2017 and 2023, approximately 1,500 vehicles were either repaired or replaced within Cache County. And that came to the tune of almost $2 million in federal grants that we were able to allocate to individuals with the program. That also impacted our air quality with a reduction of about 130 tons of significant air pollution being reduced from our air shed. So that was under the previous program. We go to the next slide here. So moving forward, and it was recently brought to our attention that there were some excess funds that were available inside of the county from APC, that's Air Pollution Control Fees. And we would like to potentially bring this program back on a smaller scale. Obviously, we wouldn't be looking at the same numbers we were looking at before with the county funding versus federal funding. But we would like to potentially reopen this program to be able to assist those, again, that have been marginalized within our communities to help with the repair and replacement of these vehicles. Our anticipation, the numbers have adjusted a little bit based off of some new information that's come in, but instead of that $75,000 to $100,000, we would invest back into the community and those small businesses such around here. That would probably be more in the $100,000 to $125,000 annually that would be projected for that, with the goal of running that program alongside the EVRAP program. And we would be able to assist, excuse me, people up to about that 300% federal poverty index. We did bring this to the Bear River Board of Health, and were able to receive their blessing towards this, but would like to bring it here to the council as well. As far as the program goes, again, it would pretty much be mirroring what we had before, maybe a few minor modifications, the largest fee. Previously, it was anybody who lived, worked, or went to school here in Cache County. Since these funds would be coming solely from people registering vehicles within Cache County boundaries, one of the new guidelines we would be looking at would be implementing it solely for residents here within Cache County as well. I believe that was everything for it, so I'd like to open it up if there are any questions.
On the previous screen, it says this would require a formal request to Cache County Council to access restricted APC fee funds. Could you tell me that acronym again, please?
Yeah, Air Pollution Control.
Okay, and those are the fees that are assessed when cars are registered?
Yes, whenever you register a vehicle here in Cache County, there's a $3 fee assessed on top, and that's the APC fee.
Okay, and are you requesting that, that approval this evening?
Yes.
To access those funds this evening, okay.
Yeah, and I'll just say, the way, because Jordan and I spoke about this previously, that the, the federal government was giving grants that we could use for some of those replacement and repair, and now the grants are only for electric vehicles. Yep, Jordan, if you want to explain that, where, where the difference is and what those funds we have.
Yeah, so with us being able to have this new Beehive Emissions Reduction, it's, it's limited to electric vehicles. We know that there's many people in our population, particularly in some of those poverty categories, that don't have the infrastructure to even be able to utilize an electric vehicle. So they, they still may experience the need to repair or replace a vehicle that is emitting pollution. And so we're, we'd like to run those two side by side so that they have the op, we have more options for individuals regardless. Does that make sense? So we're trying to make, the, the program was so successful before, we think running it side by side will allow those that can move to an EV, if they so choose, to move that way, or still replace with a cleaner emissions vehicle. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And those APC fees can only be used for control of air pollution, so they're pretty limited on what they can be done.
Now, as my second question, what other alternatives do we have for the use of those funds? You said it has to be something related to air pollution.
We've been using them almost entirely just to fund our emissions program, so that's our inspections and, and training of emission stations. Jonathan does the majority of that work, so it funds his time and our time to be able to work with those stations to do the emissions program.
What's the fund balance between?
It's close to, I believe, half a million dollars right now.
Okay.
So this would, over the course, at 125, would still leave us with some slush at the end of that. So it's not, we don't anticipate that it's going to eliminate entirety of that.
Okay, I noticed, oh, sorry, go ahead. I noticed when the state stopped requiring inspections, some shops also have varying rates for emissions. Did that used to be subsidized by the state? And is that something these funds could go towards, is actually helping pay for the testing itself?
So we used to set that, you weren't on the council at the time, but we actually came and we, we had stations come to us and ask that we go to a market base, where they get to set the market, where, because the fee that we were, we were allowing them to charge wasn't covering their costs. So we just said, well, fine, build it into your business model. If people want to go to the cheaper place, they can go to the cheaper place, or they can go to wherever. But, but the, the council voted to allow us to move that to a market, and that's why we see variability in what's being charged, so that they can cover whatever their costs are.
Thanks.
Jordan, are you guys still doing mobile vehicles emissions testing as well?
Yeah, how many do we have? We have two that are currently operational.
So they must buy an electric vehicle, but electrical fee. Electric vehicles range like crazy in price and also the charging requirements. So are you putting kind of a focus on what vehicles they can purchase that are best for that? Does that make sense?
That program's being run by the state, and we're administering it. This program that we're asking for wouldn't be to support electric vehicle. It'd be to support emissions vehicles.
Got it, okay.
Did I get that correct?
Yeah.
What do you do to get the word out about the program?
We, we work through a lot of the stations. You want to talk more about that?
Sure. Yeah, as far as the EVRAP or the potential VRAP program?
I was talking about the latter, but I would be curious about the former as well.
Yeah, the EVRAP program, I know the state is working on some advertisements. Basically, we're just waiting for all of the counties to get on the same foot on it, and then they'll be able to launch those ad campaigns for it. For the VRAP program, previously, we did run ads through Facebook. We did some spots on the radio, did some at movie theaters and whatnot. But largely, it was word of mouth from stations, providing the education out there and letting them know that if somebody's failing on an emissions test, they can send them over to us, we can analyze the situation and see if we'd be able to assist in that.
Any other questions for either Jordan or Jonathan? Okay, all right, thank you so much. Okay, I would entertain a motion on that, to be able to release those funds.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the APC funds towards the VRAP.
Jordan, do we need to specify the amount that we're releasing in this motion?
Yeah, so our, our formal request would be annually up to 125, but no more than 125, so we can manage that, that surplus that we have over the course of the program.
Is that included in your motion?
We revise that motion to include a up to $125,000 annually for the VRAP program.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the, the county funds for annually up to $125,000 for the VRAP repair or replacement program. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, Craig, Hidalgo. There you are. I couldn't see you anymore.
I'll ask for the next slide.
Craig, will you pull that microphone down a little bit, too? Because it's, it's hard to hear when you're in the back of the room.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's perfect. And if you would identify yourself before you start talking.
My name is Craig Hidalgo. I'm the, a mayor of Clarkston, but also the chair of the Cache County Council of Governments. And I'm here to report to the county council the progress for this coming, for this year that we reviewed and approved as a COG and representing to you for ratification of our decision. I'd like to go through a little bit of a history to answer some questions I've had from county council members. The last couple of years, we've done some restructuring in the COG arena. And as a result, the 2024 and 2025 had higher-than-normal funds that we could disperse out. This new process that we've set up allows COG to set aside a $3 million reserve fee that can only be distributed through Cache County Council approval. But it's also, it was set up to address issues that might come up, undetermined issues as far as inflation or something like that. So that's what the purpose of that was, to help many municipalities that come forth. They do a process of review. Two years later, they get the funding. In that two years, economic conditions can change to the point that they need some additional funds. And this way, we can address those. But again, the county council has to approve any distribution of those funds. In 2020, 2026, we will be going back for funds for 2028, and that'll be for about $7 million to $8 million a year, as what we've had in the past. So this chart up here, I've had some questions from council members and county council, as well as municipalities, about just where things, the distribution of income, COG funds have been. If you look at this one right here, this is the sales tax distributions by county. This is what comes in per county or per municipality throughout the county through the year. And if you take a look at that, that gives you a pretty good idea of where the sales tax distributions are coming in at. Now, if you go to the next chart, this is COG's overall fund distribution by jurisdiction. This is how the COG has, has basically voted. They went through the presentations, and they vote each year on where they want these distributions to go from. And if you look at the two charts right here, and I've got it broken out, I won't talk about the other two because it's broken out by rural and also, not rural, but urban. But this gives you an idea that with the tax revenues coming in and what we're loaning out, the COG is looking at what the transportation needs are in the valley. And I think this demonstrates that we've done our due diligence in making sure that funds are rewarded and allocated according to what's needed in the, in the county. So if you go back to the original slide, up one more, right there. For this year, we had distributions or a fund total. Let me get my paper straight here, let me tell you. We had 17 million, just under 17 and a half million dollars that we could allocate out. We had 15 million three that went towards, or 2, 2 million that went towards urban, and the others went towards the communities in the areas. This is how we broke it out, and this is what we're presenting to the council this evening for your sustaining vote, is that we award these counties. We went through the presentations, we voted based on the presentations, what was given, and this is how it laid out. So North Logan City will get 5.8 million. North Logan will get about 4.7 million to finish the Second East. 3 million, 3.8 million for Heights Park, and 900,000 to North Logan City for some remainder of their part roundabout. So this is what we're referencing to the county council to vote on this evening. Is there any questions you have on this? Go ahead.
So, yes, last year, and maybe you addressed this in the beginning, and I didn't quite understand. Last year, you had the contingency of a couple million dollars, I think. And this year, the contingency fund was set aside?
No, the contingency's never been greater than 3 million.
Then 3 million, okay, so yeah, there's $3 million set aside, and this year, it's not included?
It is included. We still have a set aside of 3 million, and that will always be there. That's part of the reason for the reallocation, resetting this up and doing it. We recognized that due to inflation, for example, we had the COVID situation, that just destroyed some of the proposals that we'd already approved. And we realized we needed to be able to address those, so we, we decided, okay, we've got to have a set aside. We've got to have some money that we can go back to the council, county council, and say, we need to use some of this to cover this. That's what the purpose of that is. And again, only the county council can approve that.
Okay, I just see at the top of the graph, it says contingency fund zero.
Yeah.
So I was just a little confused, because in the year previous, I'd seen it.
So last year, we put the $3 million in the contingency fund, knowing that last year, we awarded about 10 million, and knowing that this year was going to be the 17 million. So that 3 million's still being held, but we're not putting any more in that contingency fund. So in the future, as those, now $27 million worth of projects go to construction, if there is a shortfall, we would come back to the county council and say, hey, we're here to do an amendment, kind of takes them out of contingency, award it to a previously awarded project. And then that following year, when we came back, we'd probably try to put that money back into that contingency fund to bring that balance back to the $3 million.
That makes sense, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone else have questions about any specific projects? Or any other questions for Mayor Hidalgo? Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a resolution, resolution later on, which I guess you'll approve.
Thank you so much. Okay, it is 5:30. We're going to start our public hearings. First public hearing we have is ordinance 2025-34, the Cache County Water Use and Preservation. I'll turn that over to Angie.
Yes, Angie Zetterquist, Interim Director, Development Services. This item is in response to a state law creating in 2022, where they adopted State Bill 110, water as part of the general plan. The new legislation required most municipalities in all counties to amend their general plan to include this element to address the impact of land use planning on water use. And per the legislature, legislation, that water element must be adopted by the end of this year. So the county did a request for proposals and brought onboard Landmark Design, who helped prepare this general plan element for us. As you can see, the steering committee consisted of Nolan Gunnel and Nate Dauges from the Planning Commission, and then our former countywide planner, Brandon Bell. And then, once that draft was completed, Planning Commission held a public hearing on October 2nd, recommending that the council approve it on a vote of 6 to 0. But I will turn the time now over to Aubrey Larson with Landmark Design to give you an overview of that water element.
Good evening, council members. My name is Aubrey Larson. And then I also have our engineer, who helped with the more technical side of this document, Easton Hopkins, on speakerphone. Easton, do you mind saying something so we can make sure we can hear you?
Hello, everyone.
Can you hear him? Okay, we'll do our best. Okay, so I work for Landmark Design. I'm the company that was contracted to do the water element. I'm from Wellsville. I grew up in Cache Valley, so I understand how important water is to, to farmers, to residents. And I wanted to make sure that this new chapter of your general plan would be, you know, fulfill these three things that, as a new chapter of the general plan, this is essentially what, what this new document will do. It's meant to be an advisory guide to land use decisions. It describes where you are, where you want to be, and how you will get there. It does not create regulations or requirements, but it may recommend new policies or strategies. So at the end of the document, you'll notice there are some recommendations. Next slide, please. To take a step further back, this, as I mentioned, this will function as a new chapter of your general plan, along with land use, housing, and transportation. You'll now have water use and preservation. So why do you need a new chapter? It came about from SB 110. This was from 2022's legislative session, and it requires most municipalities in all counties to amend their general plans to address how land use planning impacts water use. And the requirement for adoption is the end of this year. There's kind of a laundry list of requirements. I think it's helpful to boil it down to these four main items. First of all, to address the effect of permitted development or development patterns on water demand and water infrastructure. To look at methods of reducing water demand and per capita water use for both existing and future development. And then to identify some opportunities for the county to modify operations to eliminate practices or conditions that waste water. You'll notice in the document, this kind of italicized lighter gray text. This was an idea from planner Brandon Bell that we highlight how each section is meeting state code requirements. So that's what that text is meant to do. Hopefully, that's helpful as you review the document. Okay, I'm going to move into just giving you a very- Okay, I'm going to move into just giving you a very high-level overview of the content, and then hopefully, there'll be a little bit of time for if there's any comments or questions. Okay, so the first part of the water element is the introduction, this sets the stage, it talks about SB 110 and those requirements. It also includes some guiding principles for water planning in unincorporated Cache County, and then it talks about some key stakeholders, key individuals who are at the table. So we love that there were guiding principles for your current general plan, and felt that it would be appropriate to have some specifically for water planning, and I want to make sure it's clear that these are for unincorporated Cache County. And we'll talk a little bit about the incorporated municipalities' role in water planning. But first is respect for private property and water rights. The second, to protect and conserve agricultural lands as a vital economic resource that happens to be tied to water. Third, encourage locally-led, wise stewardship of water use and water resources, so empowering people to make their own decisions based on the best available programs and information. And four, ensure new development aligns with long-term water sustainability goals and realities, so making sure that their decisions are data-based. Next. So there's a lot of players involved, a lot of different stakeholders, but we highlight these four key roles in the document. So the county itself serves as a regulatory body responsible for land use planning and enforcing ordinances. The county itself does not provide water. Municipalities, you know, as per your current general plan, are tasked with absorbing most new growth within their planned city and town boundaries. There are also five small culinary water systems in the unincorporated area, and they provide essential water services for the residents that live there. And then Cache Water District is tasked with protecting Cache County's water future by managing resources efficiently, planning strategically, and they also represent local interests at the state level. The next section of the document gives a little bit more context for water planning. We look at the region and some of those considerations, and then also at land use. There's a section that talks a little bit about your zoning, about agriculture and implications on water and land use, and then residential uses, and then we highlight secondary water, which is not a focus of this document, but it's still a part of the larger system and important to acknowledge. So as you are well aware, Cache County's water supply comes from the Bear River watershed. This is one of five major river basins that do eventually drain into the Great Salt Lake. Note that the state has established different regional goals to reduce gallons per capita per day from a baseline of 2015. I recognize this is old data, I believe they're updating these goals currently, but essentially, the goal for the Bear River region is an 18% reduction from that 2015 baseline to 2030, and so on and so forth. Groundwater, groundwater is an important consideration. Nearly all of Cache County's culinary water comes from groundwater. We discovered that, you know, there's not a lot of current information on groundwater, so there is a study going on right now. That study will be critical to informing both near-term and long-term decisions about water allocation, source protection, and then making sure that growth aligns with the available supply. County zoning. Your zoning in unincorporated Cache County emphasizes low to moderate densities and agricultural preservation. As I mentioned, high-density and mixed-use development is encouraged to incorporate into the cities that have the necessary services and infrastructure, and this water element focuses on agriculture and rural residential uses for that reason. Agriculture is a key component to the water element. Cache County ranks third in Utah for agricultural DDP. In 2023, it was 9.3% of the state total. There's nearly 1,400 farms that produce a variety of crops, primarily alfalfa, barley, wheat, safflower, and corn. Agriculture depends heavily on the Bear River water for irrigation, and we noted that crop flexibility and rotations make farmland critical to Cache County's water conservation strategy. There's key differences between irrigated and non-irrigated crops. Irrigated relies on diversion, sprinklers, or flooding, this generally has more stable yields versus non-irrigated or dry-farmed, which relies on rainfall, soil moisture, and these areas are more drought-sensitive for that reason. The kind of orange-yellow you can see in that map represents dry-farmed areas. It's also important to consider that the conversion of farmland to municipal uses will generally shift the use from surface water to groundwater. So if you think if there was a crop there being irrigated with surface water, you build a home that needs a well, it's now drawing from the aquifer and is more consistent drain on groundwater sources. There's a variety of tools to protect agricultural land, primarily agricultural protection areas or APAs, as well as conservation easements. Currently, there's thousands of acres in Cache County that are already preserved. We noted that there's strong local participation in many of the state programs, lots of support for irrigation upgrades, efficient practices, and the long-term preservation of farmland. Highlighting some of the five small systems in unincorporated Cache County, first of all, most residents do rely on private wells, but then we've shown those five systems with Benson Culinary Improvement District, the largest, and Paradise West, the smallest at the south end of the valley. We talked to water managers from each of these systems to just, you know, get their perspectives on water conservation, and there is an appendix to the document that summarizes some of those key takeaways. Secondary water, as I noted, this is not the focus of the water element, but is important to acknowledge, there are over 100 irrigation companies, and many of the historic canal systems face maintenance, safety, and encroachment challenges. These canals remain vital for agriculture, recharge of aquifers, and they do support secondary water use to extend culinary supply. Water supply and demand analysis, so this section, as I mentioned, is what Easton and his team were primarily responsible for. They did a high-level analysis looking at both water supply and demand and existing and future demand scenarios. So, as I mentioned, it was a high-level study on both water supply and demand, specifically focused on unincorporated Cache County and those two main land use types, agriculture and residential. Note that there were data limitations, as private well users are not required to report water usage, so that made it difficult to quantify total residential demands, so we did rely heavily on data reported by those five smaller systems to get an estimate. That graph is meant to show kind of the breakdown of estimated annual demand, the dark green color is agriculture, that small sliver of yellow representing residential uses in unincorporated Cache County, and then it's important to consider, you know, there's also municipal and industrial draw on the system from those incorporated cities as well. Key takeaways, so when the residential usage is applied across the data set, the takeaway is that per acre water use in residential areas does exceed that of agriculture in Cache Valley. Given this fact, supporting, continuing, and preserving agriculture water use can be considered a water use and preservation strategy for Cache County. Current supply status, the county's supply currently meets demand. That groundwater study I mentioned will be very important for clarifying long-term drinking water limits. Growth limits, it's recommended that future development aim to stay within existing demand. There are shifts in agricultural use with those trends expected to continue and decline. Remember that there are those trade-offs between surface to groundwater. And then with residential use, reducing outdoor water use, or at a minimum, avoiding the use of groundwater for landscapes, is an important strategy for preserving water. At the end of the document, there are, I believe, 11 recommendations. They're kind of categorized as water conservation-specific strategies, and then we did go through the current general plan and listed out additional strategies that are already in place. So if you'd like, we can go through the 11 strategies. What I think I'll do is just keep moving through the slides, so if there's questions on any of these, please let me know. Keep going. Next one, next one. And then at the back of the document, there's some resources for residents, and this is links to different information, such as water-wise landscape design, principles, programs, funding, classes, et cetera. This is what that table looks like, so just some helpful links to help residents who'd like to learn more. And that is it. I know that was a lot of information, but if there's any questions, make sure the hard questions are directed at Easton, but thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Aubrey. Does anyone have some questions before we open this to the public? Okay, we'll get back to you when we discuss this. Okay, this is a public hearing about the county water use and preservation element. Is there anyone here in the public that is here to speak about this proposal? Okay?
Move to close?
Sorry.
It moved in second that we close public hearing. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, we'll move to the second, ordinance 2025-40, Mountain Manor Springs Rezone. Turn that over to Angie.
Yes, so this is the, I'm sorry, again, Angie Zetterquist, Mountain Manor Springs Rezone. This rezone request is 98.6 acres, going from the agricultural A10 zone to the rural 2 zone. What that would do, if approved, would allow maximum potential of 49 lots in the RU2 zone. If you want to go to the next slide. So again, this is in Petersburg. The next closest RU2 zone would be the High Country Estates. This is just an overview of the two properties from an aerial, if you go to the next slide. So yeah, the closest RU2 is in the orange at the very top of that map, that is the High Country Estates rezone and subdivision that was developed in 2011. The green hash marks on this map illustrate the future annexation area for Mendon. We did reach out to Mendon City, and they had concerns about this large of a development, potential development, having on their own city services, because they'd be utilizing a lot of the roads, the libraries, all of that. Although they did not outright oppose the rezone, they did have some serious concerns. So this was taken before Planning Commission for a public hearing on October 2nd. Let me go to the next one. And ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend denial of the project on a six-to-zero vote. The conclusions that they reached in making that recommendation are that the rezone request is not compatible with the purpose of the RU2 zone. Typically, they like to see those zones closer to municipal boundary. This one, the closest town or city is Mendon, and it's about 1.25 miles away. The rezone in High Country Estates is a little bit closer at, oh no, so that's 1.25, Mendon is 1.65 miles away, so it's not close to a municipality. The request is not consistent with the general plan currently, which has this area identified as agricultural and ranching, as well as mountain rural and conservation more towards the west. It is not appropriately served by public roads and services. If you go back to the aerial, there you go. You can see there is a private road, well, maybe you can see it, but there is a private road along the north boundary of that parcel ending in 17, and then it's basically a private driveway that extends past there. That is the only ingress egress, so a large development, if the rezone were approved, would require that secondary access, and it's just not there currently. Let me go back to the last slide, thanks. So again, it's not suitably or appropriately served by those public roads and services, and as mentioned before, Mendon had some serious concerns. So based on those conclusions, again, they did recommend denial unanimously, six to zero, and that concludes my report. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Angie. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here from the public to speak about this project?
I will say, I haven't been able to see the applicant, I'm not sure if they're out in the crowd, but...
Kurt, would you ask if anyone's here to speak to the Mountain Manor Springs Rezone?
I would like to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, and if you'll come to the microphone and identify yourself, and...
Benjamin Chantansler from Providence. I'm gonna have to agree with the planning commission that this should not be rezoned. We are losing our farmland at a way too fast, and we shouldn't be losing it at all. We need our food to grow somewhere, and there's plenty of vacant commercial lands in our cities that can be made into mixed-use developments.
Thank you, Benjamin. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak to this, as the proponent here? Okay, all right.
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we close public hearing, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right, the next public hearing, we're going to go ahead and turn some time over to our county executive before we open that to the public.
Do you want me to address you from here, or...
You can address us from there, if you'll speak really loudly. And you know what, George, it might be better if you come there, just so that everyone can hear you.
I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and those that are gathered. Our task when I was elected about two months ago was to try and get control of the county budget. The county budget had been operating at a deficit for a couple of years. A significant deficit was predicted for this year. We identified over the first couple of months of our work, about 2.8 million dollars of reductions. Some of those reductions involved reducing employees, that's a very painful thing to do. We have done that, we've reduced our workforce by a number of employees, and we're looking at other deductions. This library amount to approximately 10% of the reductions we're suggesting. I want to just explain the principal reason why we're suggesting that the library be looked at. It's a double taxation problem, as shown on this graph. We have a number of municipal libraries that operate in Cache Valley, there are eight of them. These libraries are good libraries, and that does not include the Cache County Library, which is also a good library. The operating cost of the eight operating libraries is 4.6 million dollars. In the last 10 years, 31 and a half million dollars have been spent by the various cities to put in new libraries. If you take a look at those costs, in the cities in which the libraries are operating, the individuals in those cities are paying approximately 163 dollars on average per household for those municipal libraries. The county library is paid for by general fund, meaning everyone in the county is taxed for that library. That amount to about 4.81 cents per household. So the individuals that are using the Cache County Library are paying 48, 4.81 cents per household. The people who are using the municipal libraries are paying 163 dollars per household. You can see the imbalance. In addition, we're asking those individuals who are using the municipal libraries to pay 200,000 dollars toward the county library. That's where we get the double taxation problem, and that's the reason we're suggesting that the council address that. It is a council decision. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Okay, before we open this up for public hearing, I just want to give a few instructions for anyone who wants to speak. We'll have you come to the microphone and identify yourself. We're going to limit comments to two minutes apiece, and would you please, if you're saying the same things that have already been said, we'd like to hear something new, if we could. We're going to limit this hearing to a half an hour, so we'll start right now, and we'll go to 22 minutes after the hour, or 18 after the hour? I can't do math. We'll go to 22 after the hour. Okay, and I just want to say also that the final decision on the future of the library will not... will not be made tonight. This is not a night where we, as a council, will discuss this. We're going to hear public input from you, but as we get towards the end of December, where we make final decisions about the library or about the whole budget as a whole, we have some pretty hard decisions to make. And so this is for public input, but we will not be discussing it and making a decision tonight, so I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that. So with saying that, we'll go ahead and open up this public hearing. If you want to, those that want to speak, if you'll come to the microphone, and maybe we could have you line up along that wall over there in order, so that there's some orderliness to the speaking. And we'll go ahead and start.
So on this paper, on point number five, it says, "In 2010, there was public discussion about forming a county-wide library system." 2010 is 15 years ago. Many library patients weren't even born yet. It's time to put up another, oh, to make the county-wide library system.
Thank you, Benjamin. And will you all please tell where you're from? Will you give us what municipality you live in?
Roy Swolker said I'm from Providence as well, but I was a longtime resident of Logan City, and I happily paid my tax fees for the Cache Library as well, because I think it's a benefit, not just for me as a resident of Providence City, but it is a benefit for the entire county if they'll just use it. For $4.89, that's the price of about half a cheeseburger, right? That's not a big deal. We're talking about very little money to save a library that's contributing for 20% of our county. This is something that we just need to be reasonable on. There's a lot of ways to save money. This is not one of them. You guys are very smart. You can come up with other ways to find money savings, or even increasing taxes slightly would be a better option than closing something that benefits so many of our residents and children. In fact, you're talking 2/3 of the people going to the library are little kids. My kids are here with me today because I need them to know that if something like this is happening, they can stand up and they can voice their opinion. This is something that we need to consider. It's not something you guys should just do overnight, and I like that you're gonna discuss this further, but it is a benefit to our county. It's a moral benefit. It's a way for kids to improve. It's just something that's not going to be a drain on the economy. And by getting rid of the library, all you're doing is reducing the benefits that we have in our county, and you're actually increasing the cost overall for the county because of the 6,000 households that'll have to go spend $163 for a library card. That accounts to almost $1 million, so...
Thank you. And we have Andrew here that's gonna time us for the two minutes, so we'll keep an eye on that, too.
Janelle Sealy, I'm from Providence. Cache County has a long history of underfunding the library. The library services in the county started in 1933, and there was an interlocal agreement established with Logan City. By 1977, the county opted to about the tune of $3,000 to quit participating in that library system, and that divergence has led us to where we are today. In 2008, the county withdrew its funding from the Bookmobile, further exacerbating the Because of the county's lack of willingness to step up to provide library systems, other cities have stepped up to do those things because the services are inadequate. I think some of those things have been highlighted in the document that's been distributed, but one of the suggestions is that a school district fills the gap in literary access, and that's simply not the case. Young children do not have access to the school system. Adults do not have access to the school system. And even my six children, who do have access to the school system, say, you know, to use the Sora system that the school district provides, you might wait over a year to get a book. Whereas if you use the Libby system that the county provides, you're wait maybe two weeks or less. So going through the school just takes forever. I mean, to wait an entire school year for the book that you want to read, that's a little unreasonable. The county is asking municipalities to take over the library with just two months' notice, and that's just not feasible. Municipal budget cycles are offset by six months from the counties, and the county library is currently pursuing state accreditation. Once that's complete within the next two years, we'll be eligible for grant funding and financial support. Utah State Code 97501 clearly designates counties as a taxing authority, or libraries. Am I okay to finish? Cities that operate their own libraries are statutorily excluded from a county tax. So the concern about double taxation is misplaced. If the county levied just 1/10th of the allowable tax rate, only on residents, without a dedicated library, it would create sustainable funding for the library, which, for the average home in Cache Valley, that would be 1/10th of what the county's allowed to tax would be $25 a year. Where Mendon's non-municipal tax, I mean, non-municipal fee is about $40, Logan's is on the highest end at $163. $25 to remain library access countywide is significantly less than any resident that is currently not covered by a city library could pay to have those access and have that service.
Janelle, I'm gonna cut you off.
I'm done. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
And I hope everyone can say what they want to say.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Anne Hedrick, and I am the president of the Cache Valley Library Association, and we sent you all an email, and I just wanted to highlight a few parts of it. 95% of Americans aged 16 and older agree that materials and resources available at public libraries play an important role in giving everyone a chance to succeed. And 94% that say that having a public library improves the quality of life in their community. Libraries are institutions that provide and protect deep-rooted American values: community. In the age of artificial intelligence especially, there's an unprecedented need for both credible resources and human connection. Libraries provide both and much more. Libraries are one of the few remaining public spaces that reflect community identity and defend the common good. Libraries offer a place for community groups to meet, collaborate, and casual and organized ways alike. Fairness is another value. We believe it should be easy for residents to access both physical and digital library services, no matter where they live. Free library service for all users is a democratic value, which provides equal access to many benefits: learning and discovery, author readings, storytimes, other youth programs, readers' guides, book clubs, and social gatherings, STEM education, and access to technology such as printers, Wi-Fi computers, maker tech, and also unique materials like telescopes, headphones, tools. Libraries provide a safe, healthy environment for users of all ages and backgrounds. And then value. Some government and community services are valuable enough that they should be funded by a broader base than those who use them or use them the most, such as fire departments, schools, and libraries. Return on investment calculations vary, but they generally point to many times the amount invested. Estimates place this figure anywhere from $5 to $30 return for each dollar spent on library services. So we appreciate you taking the time to read what we wrote, and hope you consider the value of libraries.
Thank you.
For everybody in the county.
Hello, my name is Jane Erickson. I'll give a little personal history. I was a school librarian in two other states and at Millville Elementary before I retired. I'm here today to urge you to keep and hopefully expand library services for Cache County residents. Since the library services are so fractured in Cache County, there are many pockets of residents without service. Your map shows that, that the CVLA gave you. Well, Millville is one of those unlucky groups and gaps. Every year at Millville Elementary, I presented a program to kids to let them know where they could use a library besides the school library. They were so enthusiastic and very interested, and they would get acquainted with the Bookmobile and learn about their options outside of the Millville School Library. Well, the county eliminated support for the Bookmobile several years ago. Millville kids who have families that have finances, transportation, time, and energy to let them use the Hiram, Logan, or county facility in Providence, those kids were lucky. Not everyone was lucky, but at least they could use the county facility for free if they could get there. An integrated city-county library system was voted down repeatedly. The county eliminated support for the state Bookmobile. Now the council is considering eliminating the county-wide library. Why do we have this pattern? It's in our interest to keep educated and enriched and engaged citizenry. I urge you to keep the library services. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
My name is Allison Peterson. I'm from Hiram. I am one of the 80% of people that you're worried about double taxing. I don't really care about the 80%. I care about the 20% that will be left without a library resource. Frankly, I wish more of my taxes went to things like libraries. And you're all public servants, and I can't think of a more universal public service than a library, other than like, maybe a road. And I urge you to remember that you are public servants, and this is a public good. When I was in elementary school, I was viciously bullied, and one of the only places I could turn to that I knew that I was safe was the library. Libraries became like chapels for me, growing up. I dealt with a lot of emotional turmoil in my home and with my friends, but I always knew I was safe in the library. When I was 16 and horrifically depressed and contemplating suicide, I ate lunch alone in the library. The library saved my life. Books make us better people. Books made me kinder. They made me smarter. They made me stronger. They made me braver. They made me more empathetic. I urge all of you to consider this. Why would you deprive any resident of this county, present or future, of a library, of books, of a safe place, of a chapel? And I urge you, if you do not have this empathy, pick up a book and learn some. Thank you.
That's not appropriate. We can't have clapping, please. That's gonna take up our time, so thank you.
I'm Laura Lacho of Providence, and my husband and I homeschool our kids. We always have, so the library has always been essentially a second home for our family. And I don't say that lightly. My kids and I are at the Cache County Library almost every single day. It's part of our PE as we walk there. We interact with the librarians. We rely heavily on the resources they offer. For our family, it's primarily the books, but there are also resources that we have used. When we moved here, we've had to move a lot with my husband's work. One of the top two considerations we've always had in moving anywhere is, is there a library? And the Cache County Library was the main deciding factor in our moving to Providence. We are part of the 20%. I agree with what others have said. $4.81 is not a steep burden to bear. We would happily spend more. We utilize this, like the previous person said, it's almost like their chapel. It's a safe place. My kids feel safe. It's the thing they look forward to every single day. People have already touched on the economic factors, but studies have shown that there is a strong return on investment for the resources the library provides and how it benefits the community down the road. Also, having a library in a community, it makes it more attractive to potential home buyers and people moving into the community, and it can lead to a better quality of life, and it can increase property values as well. Studies have also shown that having access to a library can increase reading test scores for children in the community. I know that's been true for my kids. Taking them to the library is what started their love of learning, and I just strongly encourage you to vote against defunding the library, because investing in the Cache County Library is an investment in our community's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Julia Justice. I live in Providence. I've been losing sleep over the library question and have been doing a lot of my own personal research and emailed all of the council members some of the things that I've been looking at and analyzing and researching, and I appreciate the responses that I got from Council Member Garrity and Heard and also Executive Danes. So thank you for reading through my letter, and I hope that if you haven't, that you'll have time to do that. One thing that's been interesting to me to think about is how does the Cache County Library spending in Cache County compare to library spending in other counties in the state of Utah? And one thing I found that was interesting is that it's about four times less if you look at average county spending, and that's after you adjust for the cost of those who are covered by municipal libraries. So it's an example of how Cache County is already currently underserving its residents. And another salient point from the letter I wrote that I think is really interesting, after talking to the data state coordinator, Sam Dutton, at the Utah State Library Division, is that if we were to defund the Cache County Library, we would create the single largest service gap in the state of Utah for library services. I agree with what's been spoken already and the importance of children being able to check out books and take them home in order to not create delay in their language development. Something else that my letter touches on is the number of resources per capita that are available currently to Cache County residents compared to residents in the municipalities. And for Cache County residents, it's .7 resources per capita compared to the average county, the county average of the municipal libraries of 6.82 resources per capita. So my argument would be not that we should defund the library, but that we are underfunding the library and should increase library funding by at least four times. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Ashfield, and I am currently a resident of Providence, but also, like someone else said, happily paid that, you know, other 80% tax when living in Logan. I think I could expound on the values of libraries for a long time, but we all know that by now. I think after reading over these, the information sheet, that what stood out to me is the people who probably can't even be here to speak for themselves, because I think if we defund the library, of those 20% of people who it's for, I don't know exact statistics, but I know the number of Cache County residents who are living at or below the poverty line is between 10 or 13%. And so for here, in this paper, it said, you know, oh, well, you can get a municipal city card and you can pay, but that's not a live option for many, many residents of Cache County. And the people who will suffer the most because of that are children who are living in poverty, and they're already at a disadvantage, and doing, eliminating the funding for the library and eliminating the library will just be putting them at a further disadvantage, people who are already, you know, some of the most vulnerable in our county. So I hope you won't rush this decision. I think there can even be possible other solutions, but if we defund the library at the end of the year, then we can explore those solutions, and we can't look at those other options, and there will be an interruption in service to those people. Well, to everybody, but especially to those people who need it most and need the resources at the library the most. So I just would ask you to consider and strongly decide not to defund the library.
Thank you.
My name's Kevin Searle. I'm also from Providence. Struggled what to say tonight since I found out that this was a potential of happening. I found this on Saturday. It's called, it's a group called Raising Readers: Books Build Bright Futures. Did you know that reading for enjoyment is the single biggest predictor of a child's future happiness and success? More than family circumstances, parents' educational background, or income, reading impacts a child's future academic performance, emotional well-being, communication skills, economic security... future academic performance, emotional well-being, communication skills, economic security, ambition, and happiness. Studies show that kids reading for enjoyment in the U.S. is in rapid decline. In 2012, 53% of nine-year-olds read almost every day. Just 10 years later, in 2022, the number had fallen to 39%. In 2012, 27% of 13-year-olds read for fun daily. By 2023, that number was just 14%. And they give suggestions for how we can turn that around, and one of the big suggestions is go to bookstores, go to libraries. I urge you as a council to continue to represent the 20% that will not have access. If this goes away, $4.81 is, or excuse me, the recommended $250,000 reduction is less than 1% of the annual budget of the county. So, let's please, I urge you to fund the library.
My name is Heidi Barrison. I'm from Hyde Park. So, I will give you a whole nother aspect of what you guys have heard this evening. 20 years ago, when I moved to Cash County, I was lucky enough to be able to attend the North Logan Library. There was an agreement between Hyde Park and North Logan. When I had my children, we attended the library weekly. We checked out at least 200 books a year that we read. And when we lost that and didn't have that funding anymore, I could not afford at the time the $80 to be able to go to the library. That was not within my budget. When I found out there was a Cash County Library, you better believe, we drove from Hyde Park to Providence three to four times a month in order to check out books. Because of that, there is no way I could afford my children's addiction to reading at this point. My 10-year-old reads at least three books a week. My 13-year-old, I have no idea how many books she reads. I constantly go into her room and warn her, "I will ruin the ending of that book if you do not put it away right now and go to bed." This is a constant thing in my house. I was thrilled to know that we had a county library. Right now, there are four libraries that are closer to me than the Providence Library. I have to pay for every single one of them. In my budget, I can pay for Smithfield Library one year for my family. That's all I can afford right now. And there is no way I can afford Logan, North Logan, or even Providence. So, I rely on the library. The amount of books that we read a week is within 10 to 15, just my family. We do online audio. We do Kindle books because frankly, we don't make it down to Providence as much as we used to. But we use it constantly. And it would be such a disappointment if you chose to get rid of the county library. You would hurt many of us throughout the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kendra Penry. I live in Providence. I actually live across the street from the library. So, I am not only willing to pay the taxes for it, I'm also willing to allow everyone to continue to park in front of my driveway to go to the library. I would actually be willing to pay more for the library even if I didn't use it myself because I understand the essential nature of it building an informed citizenry that is pivotal to our democracy. And that is actually the point that I wanted to make tonight. Clearly, people care about this, and we want to have a voice in this more than just a public hearing and more than just the people that are willing to stand up and speak. Because the number one way that we get to have a voice in this is our vote. And right now, this feels like it's happening to us. We did not get a chance to vote for the current executive proposing this budget. So, if you all decide to move forward with eliminating the library, that is your choice. We understand that. I ask that you wait until we have a chance to speak through our vote because that is where we have the most power. And if you close the library before we have that chance, it's a lot harder to restart something that's closed than to find another solution to keep it going. So, please consider that we need time and we need a chance to say what we need to say through our vote because we are a democracy after all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi all, I'm Esther Hungerford. I'm a student at USU. I have an active library card at the Logan City Library, and I volunteer at the Smithfield Library. I think it's fair to say that despite our differences, both those who hope to keep our county library open and those who would cut funding share the ultimate goal of promoting literacy, education, and widespread dissemination of knowledge throughout our communities. We recognize the importance of fostering a sense of community and inclusivity in an increasingly divided era, holding space for those like us and those different from us. We agree that everyone, especially children, should be loved, fostered, and cared for. These are pillars of our society. As a resource, libraries provide protection for the physical items of their collection just as they do for the homeless, the abused, the hungry, the immigrants, the young, the sick, and any seeking comfort. Expecting that every patron has access to even their most basic needs, food or shelter, ignores the reality of our world. Libraries serve as a valuable third space, meaning one in which people can stay without an expectation of payment, allowing people of every socio-economic background to benefit from their services. The Cash County Library alone offers computer access in an increasingly digital world, allows access to online books, audiobooks, comic books, carries a diverse range of books, including those in languages other than English, teaches patrons to crochet, hosts book clubs, storytimes, and art shows. It has become more than repository for books through these programs. It's elevated the library experience to something not only tailored for the community, but something tailored by the community. By defunding and shutting down this valuable resource, many of its patrons will be unable to access similar services without paying for a city library card elsewhere, creating financial and physical barriers to entry that patrons cannot afford. I believe that a good city, community, or library cares for all its patrons, even those who may need a little more attention. Please allow us to prove our commitment to caring for our neighbors by continuing to fund the Cash County Library and its necessary services.
Thank you. Who's?
I think it's out there.
Oh, is there? There's, I'm hearing.
They're listening. They can't hear.
Oh, it's this meeting out there? It's just the echo of it? Oh, okay. Okay, that'll be fine. I was hearing something, I couldn't figure out where it came from.
Hi, my name's Melanie Domenech Rodriguez, and I'm here. I live in River Heights. I think maybe nobody from River Heights has stepped up. Shout out to the USU student. I'm a professor at USU and feeling really proud right now of our students. I'm an educator, a parent, and an avid reader. I was horrified to learn literally 10 minutes or 15 minutes ago that River Heights City does not contribute to the county library. What I wanted to share today was a rooting of my perspective in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. Article 21 states everyone has the right to take part in the government of his country directly or through freely chosen representatives. We're doing that right now, and it is really exciting. And the second part of that same article is everyone has the right of equal access to public service in his country. Everyone has the right of equal access to public service in his country. Libraries are one such public service. Libraries and librarians uphold and enable rights to free and equitable access to information, to education, to free expression, and to participation in civic life. Moving costs to individuals is incongruent to the basic valuing of a fundamental human right. If the Cash County Library must close, then please only do so after you have ensured library access to all people in the county. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're only going to have time for two more comments, so we'll just limit to the next two. I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Justin McMurty. I'm a resident of Providence, Utah, and I grew up in Millville. I grew up going to the county library and using the bookmobile. When I aged out of using the public school libraries, I kept using the Cash County Library. It's an important institution, and I want it to stay. I want everyone to have access to the public resources. My children go regularly to get books, and not everyone can afford a library card in other city. I do want to ask, or I should say, I want to see the library system expand instead of contract. I do have a question that doesn't appear to be answered in this document. This seems to indicate that there's a double taxation problem, and it relates to the budget. I'm unclear how reducing, getting rid of the library will actually save money in the long run because eventually, you're going to either have to lower taxes to compensate for a service that has been taken away. People are not going to stand to be taxed for a library that doesn't exist. So, that is a net zero effect on the budget. I think from what people have said today, that people are willing to pay for the library system and would like to see it expand. Thank you so much for hosting this meeting. I know it's required, but still, thank you.
Thank you. It's actually not required.
Oh, well, it's not. That's even better. Thank you for hosting this meeting and listening to the public, and thank you for everyone who's spoken.
You bet. Thank you. This will be our last comment. I'm sorry.
Sandy, we haven't heard anyone speak in favor of the defunding.
I will ask for that one word. Thank you.
Say that one more time.
Oh, I was just talking to her and saying, "We haven't heard anyone speak in opposition." So, if there was someone, I would want to give them that opportunity.
Sandy, you put a lot of pressure on me. It's good to be in the middle of, or just to see familiar faces.
State your name.
Yes, sorry. My name is Natalie DeFries. I'm from Providence. I'd like to just slow down for just a second and take some time to explain to these people. These are good people. They're here to help us. That's why they're here. It's them who are trying to do everything that they can to help us so that we can have a library. So, I understand that there's a lot of, naturally, sometimes you feel like there has to be a bad guy. I just want everyone to know, these are not the bad guys. You guys are the good guys in that you are trying to make the right decision. We understand that. As you can see, we feel very deeply about this library. I love the Logan Library too. We go there, but this is a small-town library, and I feel like the quality is just so much higher. And the citizens that are there, my boys who go there, this library is turning them into someone who I could not have done with a Logan Library or a larger library. So, we do love this library. A few questions I have. I'd like to know if you can take some time to look at an itemized statement as to why it costs $250,000 to run this library. It really isn't a large library, and there was a mention about how much it costs to run the smaller libraries, which is closer to $35,000 for Newton, Richmond, $115,000, Mendon,[1310.15][1310.15]$14,000. I just don't see how it costs $250,000. That could be, there's something I'm missing, but I'd invite you to look at an itemized statement. And we absolutely, we are kind of, what's the word, wealthier populations. And so, I know with full confidence, we could find funding if you give us time. We absolutely can find a way. So, let's find a way so that we can solve the problem with double taxation, but also find a way to keep this library here. It is so important to our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we close the public hearing, I just wanted to ask, is there anyone that is here to give an opposing view to what's been expressed? I just wanted to give anyone that chance if they wanted to say something different. Thank you all for being here. We really do appreciate hearing from you. Whatever we have to decide, and it'll be decisions that we make later, we have some really hard decisions to make. And there, like our executive said, there are people that work for the county that will be losing their jobs because of budget restraints. And so, there's some really heavy things that we have to decide, and nothing is ever free. We talk about a free library. Somebody is paying for it, and they are people who are already paying their own city for a library. So, those are just some really hard things to always have to think about. And any of you that live in Providence or River Heights, I would really encourage you to contact your city administrators because some of the other cities do provide libraries for their citizens. So, those are just some things to think about as we move forward, and we, again, really appreciate all of you being here. We really do. And we, I know that I grew up, or I raised my children, taking them to libraries. Anything we have to decide is not because we don't appreciate libraries. Just want you all to know that. I think we all probably agree that the benefits of having a library available. So, thank you for being here, and we will have all that under our consideration as we, in the next six weeks, have to finalize the budget for next year. It's a tough deal, so, thank you. We're going to move on with our meeting. You're welcome to stay if you want to take a minute and leave.
We have to have a motion to close.
Oh, first, we have to have a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, we close public hearing. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And as you leave, if you would, if you want to keep, continue speaking, it gets really loud in here. If you would go outside, or stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to stay.
Do a small recess.
Huh?
Do a small recess.
Yeah. Why don't we?
Do we want a small recess?
I wouldn't mind.
Okay, we're going to take a small, we're going to take a five-minute, or three-minute recess.
Sure. You go in there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was hot when we got here.
That's-
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we deny ordinance twenty twenty-five dash forty. Is there any further discussion? Okay, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. C, the cog funding recommendations. Craig, if anyone has any questions, we'll ask you to come up, but because I don't know if anybody has anything they want to discuss. Or do we want to spend some more time looking at this before we approve it?
I would like to.
Okay.
Maybe just a reminder of how many were present from the municipalities and how many participated in the voting process. Basically, to understand who's making the recommendation.
Okay.
And I do have a question.
Okay, yeah. Jesse, will you be available?
If I understand your question correctly, you want to know how many municipalities were involved in the voting? Every one of them?
Yep, and everyone, all the mayors who were present.
All the mayors were present and all of them voted in favor.
No, we had three that, well, we sent out a scoring sheet to all the mayors and there were three mayors that did not submit a scoring sheet.
Oh, was there?
So, yes, there was three cities that did not, one of them, I've never met the mayor in five years, so.
Cornish?
Cornish, now and again, we do see one from them, but they've never been to a meeting, so.
In that situation.
It's probably better maybe that they aren't voting if they're not coming.
Normally, in that situation, they haven't even submitted anything and don't care.
Thanks. Okay, yes.
And I could find this information, but since Jesse is here, it's easier to ask him. All of these are following like the CMPO plan, like none of these have made any real changes to what has already been, like what we've had for any of the.
Yes, if you're within the urban area projects, then there's a requirement that you, that you fall on the CMPO, their master plan. So, all these ones would fall on that as it's currently outlined.
Yeah, thanks.
That's perfect.
So, I'm, I'm fine with it. I did have a question on the Wolf Packway in Hyde Park, because they requested like four point eight million, wasn't it?
Around about?
Yeah, I'm like.
Four point seven.
How much?
They had to request a month for three point eight million and another one for four point six.
Have we helped them in the past from the cog, have we not, on this project?
No, not on this project.
Not in this area, so.
But Wolf Packway, has it not been?
Yes, Wolf Packway has had CMPO and cog funds on it. Again, as we look farther south into North Logan.
I mean, they were talking four hundred to forty-four hundred north, right?
Yeah, so even Hyde, North Logan's request this year to finish funding between thirteen fifty north and eighteen hundred north is kind of that two hundred east corridor as it gets out of Logan, goes through North Logan, Hyde Park, and goes towards Smithfield. So, this next part, they just did the roundabout there on Hyde Park Lane or by the Maverick, and they went another couple hundred feet north. This phase that they were funded for would push that a few more blocks north.
A few blocks.
And continue that.
Four point eight million dollars.
So.
That's all I wanted to look into is just what are the comparable costs? What have we put in so far? What have other entities contributed in the past?
There's a pretty.
You guys are ready to vote, I understand, but I just wasn't here last year.
When you look at that corridor as a whole, it's probably like forty million dollars on that second east corridor from, again, all the way from South into Logan. And Providence has some on one hundred west east, is it trying to figure out how those connections take place? And then again, getting it to Smithfield. So, at this point, it is up there. This one takes it from Hyde Park Lane, so again, we're just past Hyde Park Lane. It's really getting it there up into, into Smithfield, it's the last remaining piece.
It will connect Hyde Park to Smithfield?
Not this, not these funding, not this. So, there's part A is the first chunk, then part B, and then there's another little part to get that final connection into Smithfield. So, this would fund probably the first of three, maybe four total requests of getting that into Smithfield, so.
You know, you got to understand, that's, that's the problem we're having with the cog is we've only got so much. So, the municipalities are looking at this and saying, okay, you know, what can we think, what do we think we can get through this time around? That's part of the problem, we don't have the funding we need. We look at increased costs every year, and they increased every year. That's part of the reason for the contingency. So, yeah, we see some of this, what you're talking about, coming on, but the municipalities are looking at, saying, okay, what can we get? What do we really want? What can we get? And it's chipping away. Be nice, if we could have got what we needed, we could have funded them all this time around, all of them.
Is the contingency fund set by statute or ordinance, or is, just like you said, increased cost? Do we look at increasing the contingency fund for other costs that go up?
We did not.
What's the fact?
With the contingency fund, we presented that to the council. We set that as, we're going to set a contingency fund at three million.
Three million, right.
That's just all it is, is to help with some of this. Some of these issues where they come up, say, okay, we didn't plan on this, it's going to cost us an extra four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars. They come to us, we have them filed, we bring it before the Cache County Council, and you guys either yea or nay it.
My, my point was, is if we dip into it, then the next year when the cog money comes up, is it automatic we rebuild the contingency fund before any other project?
That was the intent. The contingency fund was something of our own making, because we had projects like twelve hundred west and Nibley and eleven thousand north in Cache County up there by Cherry Peak that came, got money, a couple of years passed, working through right away other issues, and then we needed more money. We can only come to the council for an official approval once a year. So, talking with the other cities and how the other counties, we met with Weber, we met with Davis, they worked that, and we'd probably do that more as a contingent, as an amendment, because we're not changing the project list. Hey, you kind of put it in this holding spot, and then we could use that at a future time. So, again, right now, there's, with these projects, we'll be sitting on almost forty million dollars in awarded projects that are somewhere in that process. So, ideally, over the next four years, most of those should get done. At that point, we could reevaluate lowering the contingency fund, doing everything, but we try to pick an arbitrary number to say, hey, we need some fluff in case, as we're awarding these out in such large amounts, that if we do have a shortfall, or somebody doesn't have to wait two years to come back and get more money to be able to keep that project moving, we don't want stalled projects.
And I agree with that. I mean, the contingency funds only is less than ten percent of what you're awarding out. So, we got to have something there, because the increased cost over four years.
And we based that off of meeting with Davis and Weber and saying, what did you guys do? And they said, this is where we set it, and it's worked well for us. So, that's kind of what we did as well, and said, okay, let's try that.
Okay.
Executive Danes?
Yeah, I, I just would say, what we could do to help cog is to try and reduce our dependence on that sales tax. That's, I mean, if we could reduce our draw on that portion and kick that over to cog, it would, it would shorten this process and give you another, you know, there's quite a bit of money involved in that. So, the pressure is on our budget, because anything we can save on our budget, that allows us to kick that money to cog. If you believe that transportation is our biggest problem in Cache Valley, we're sitting on the ability, if we can reduce our draw on that sales tax, to fund more money into cog.
Yeah, like I said, if, if, if we could have got that quarter sales tax this year, we could have funded everything we had, all of it. If we could have got the forty percent, we could have funded another six million. And we're not going to argue, you know, we're not going to debate over what you guys need to do. We, I'm a mayor, I know what you're dealing with. I had to do a tax increase last year. It's not pleasant, I get what you're going through. So, I'm not going to debate what, what you, the decisions you got to make, because I know, I've been there, I know what you're dealing with. But we really do need to come, get it back to where, like Executive Danes is saying, get it back to where it'll help transportation needs throughout the valley. Because it will help us be able to fund more and stop this repeated phasing that's going on. Get a project, fund it, get it done.
Let me just add, we're number one in the state in property taxes compared to per capita. And, and we're not, and I know this isn't a popular thing to say, I'm long, I'm not saying popular things tonight. But, we can't, we can't fund the county on the sales tax, because we won't raise property taxes to what others, other communities are doing. We are the lowest property tax in the state per capita. And we will still be the lowest, even if we pass the increase we're talking about. We really are out of balance on our revenue sources, and it's causing us to use this sales tax that's, that's starving our transportation projects.
That's still not a very popular position to be in, because me, I was the lowest in the county when I raised my taxes. If you don't think that caused a big ire with people, because they just don't understand the impact and what it really is. So, I hear what you're saying. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Thank you so much.
Keegan, do you still like some more time?
Dave have something to say?
I would, but.
Oh, Dave.
I understand if you guys are ready to vote.
We're going to let Dave Erickson speak. Go ahead, Dave. Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, I, I have, I have one question that should probably help this, help this situation. Is that in all of these projects, that we somehow allow a pioneering agreement be put into place that when we fund these, as development goes on, those developments will then return money back to cog? So, they can then continue on building those roads?
Is the pioneering agreement, has that been taken to OMP? Where are we, I know that the plan in zoning.
And that would have to be a different one. Again, I know the county's currently working on theirs, but part of that would be discussion with all those cities.
Oh, okay.
So, again, I, and I don't know if. Dave, sorry.
But that kind of return money back to the cog projects, rather than basically allowing certain developers along those roadways that you're building are going to have a, just a cash revolve of increase in dollars, because someone else built the road for them?
No, that's, that's partially correct, but not all the way, because each municipality, two years ago, we started to focus on just that. When they bring their projects forward, we take a serious look at it, and if they're going to develop a project, we had two of them this time around, where a vacant lot right across the street, we're basically challenging them, saying, okay, so if we do this, isn't that just helping that neighbor across the street? And if the answer is yes, generally, the voting takes that into consideration, and they usually don't get funded, because people recognize that. The municipalities are recognizing that developers need to pay their fair share. I'm doing that in my own community, and all of us are starting to do that in all the communities. They're making their, pay their fair share before they come to the cog to get more money.
And again, that's been the life, that's been the million dollar question every time, is when we start to balance what, again, we, did some of the developers definitely gain from that? But is there more of a gain for the transportation and for the public as a whole by having these new connections and things? Again, I know when Hyde Park originally submitted their request, it was higher, there was a lot of question on that in the presentations and after about, hey, we're, we're building this out. Curved gutter, sidewalk, shared youth paths, all those things, and they did come back, hey, let's narrow it down, let's put in, instead of doing that full section, let's put down thirty feet of asphalt, we'll do the shared youth path on one side, and then as those developers come in, they can finish the widening, they can do the curved gutter, they can do the sidewalk on the other side. So, there has been an effort made by the mayors and by the cities to say, find that balancing point of, hey, we need this connection. It's been something that's been on the plans for twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, but how do we get that connection, but not give away the money to, to the developers?
One part about, one part about that would be the commercial appraiser, because as this property or this road increases, that is drawing in commercial businesses. And if we appraise or value them right, then that helps us in our tax revenue.
Exactly.
So. We just lost our one commercial appraiser.
Yep, so we've, that's the other part, so that equals out. I agree with what Mr. Erickson said, I think it's important, but if you're covering it in your discussion on cog.
We are working diligently to do that.
Yeah, but then the commercial appraisal would help from the county's standpoint too, because we know that as that Wolf Packway went in, those property values go up.
Yeah, and again, to the kind of the whole pioneer agreement, again, that's something that would have to, the county's working on its own for the unincorporated areas, but if that was looked at for, as a cog as a whole, there was a little bit of discussion, some of that is, how does it have to be enacted in the city? How does that, how, there's a lot of more complexities to that than just, hey, the county has it for the unincorporated, individual cities have that. But how do you roll that out on a large scale? Would have to be more discussion, more research, working with the attorney's office on what could even be done there. But again, it is definitely something that, as we're going through farm fields in a sense, it's something that is definitely discussed with the cog, and they kind of try to question those cities on, hey, what, what are you doing to not just build it for the developers? And how can we get the most out of it and stretch the money? Again, as we look at the list, and as, next year, we go back to seven million dollars, I mean, Hyde Park's next on the list, and Providence, that's seven million right there. So, hey, we've had these year of ten million, year of seventeen, as we go back to seven, we're not funding eight, nine projects. We're funding one or two in the urban area, and maybe a few of the smaller ones in the rural area. But, again, the construction's gotten more expensive, all that's gone up, sales tax is not increasing crazy quickly. So, we are seeing that, hey, it is limiting what can be done, but, again, we're grateful for the projects we are able to do every year, so.
Okay. Dave, did you want to say anything else before we maybe take a motion?
No, I appreciate the comments with the chair, though, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I am going to go ahead and suspend the rules and recommend that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, approving the twenty-five Cache County Council and Government's funding. I understand the cog does their work, and I understand we got to work with, the executive talked about the sales tax, we're all aware of that, so we hope to work together on that. But I do appreciate your work on it, and so I'm recommending approval.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. Is there any further discussion? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, thank you for all that you do, Mayor Hidalgo, we appreciate you. And Jesse and Jeff, all of you that work. I know it's.
We're thankful for them, again, mayor from Logan's here, some of them have their own council meetings, Mayor Peterson was here this earlier, so, again, it is hard competing with everybody, but we do have a lot of support from the mayors, and it makes it a lot easier, so.
We appreciate what you do, thank you. Okay, pending action, ordinance nine A, Angie, do you want to help us work through this?
What I can do. The applicant who spoke last time, Cole Stocker, is not able to be here tonight, so, but I hope you did get the information that he forwarded with the links to different solar facilities they do operate, and including the sheep grazing around those facilities in Texas. But, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, does anybody have anything they want to ask Angie, or?
I have questions, I just have concerns, and so I'd like to continue this, is my personal feeling, as I've been talking, and I read what he sent us, and that was helpful. But at the same time, it just made me understand the differences of what Cache County has and what he was pointing out on the other projects.
So, is there, what resources do we have to answer those questions, Nolan? Where would you go for your answers? What could the rest of us?
I think there is, is some very, very influential people or knowledgeable people who can help us understand the impacts of solar of this size in this type of community. I mean, we said twenty acres or larger. What's larger, a thousand, six hundred?
What, if we wanted to set a maximum?
And we're throwing an industrial zone in areas that are very, very much agricultural, and we just talked about agricultural and that. I mean, where they're proposing this is in Cache Junction, where there is no irrigation of farm ground. And we got to represent and understand the property rights of those guys who own that ground, because I'm a farmer, and there hasn't been much made, money made from farming. And so, these guys who are out there can say, hey, I can make money from solar. But, what does that do to the other farmers there when we throw an industrial zone into that area? And I want to see the furtherness of what this means to us, so.
So, I have some potential references, I, I said I would look into it, so I tried to follow through on that, and I, I don't know if I'm saying this county correctly, but Curritic County in North Carolina, they actually added use in an ag zone, and they had a whole bunch of restrictions. I can email you the PDF, it takes up about five pages, but they have land use definitions for solar facilities, which type of facilities are restricted, requirements and standards, a whole bunch of different things, includes erosion and sediment control, a vegetative buffer, a decommissioning plan, fencing, all sorts of things. The other thing I looked into was, and this is more on a state level, but some states, I mentioned requiring potentially, you know, the municipality or the local area to have access to, or at least write a first refusal for the utilities. That's less common on a utility base, but I did see, it was common if, if the local utility wants to build a connection to, to transport that electricity. That is a common thing to give the local utility write a first refusal, that way, they can collect the revenue that would be generated from that, rather than have it be entirely out of state. So, those are factors that I think we ought to consider, and to Nolan's point, I think those would require more time. I'd love to even reach out to that county and, and ask how they went about that, or if they feel like it's working. And that's not something I, is going to happen super quickly for me, so that would be my preference.
I mean, the planning and zoning guys really delved into this, and as well as staff, and that's why we looked at it as a zone, because then you can do a CUP. But, I've stated before, and I'll state again, I don't like CUPs. You very much, once they come, cannot deny a CUP.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd rather have this, we do call them solar farms, I'd rather have a provision in the agricultural zone than require.
A specific.
Rezoning to industrial, if I'm showing my hand a little bit.
I mean, we all know we got to improve our ways of energy, but.
And I'll call back on that, I, a minimum of twenty, but a maximum of what? I still think we can say there's a maximum, and it can't be like, because within so many, certain amount of distance of each other, right?
To cite this example, I think they did a thousand acres was the max, if it was one parcel, and if it was multiple property owners, I think they did a max of fifteen hundred. So, that's maybe a starting point to look at, but those are the type of things, if you looked at how others are doing it, it might inspire some ideas or at least create a framework to, to start from.
I keep waiting for you to say it's a guiding line.
Dang it, I missed the pun. I do, I probably should state for the record, I'm not against solar or renewable.
I think, I think it's.
And we're here for property.
It's just new to us, and so we're trying to be cautious, right?
Yep.
And we're setting a precedent.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, so if we were going to, Angie, if we were going to do something like that, talk about maximums, or look at some different kinds of zoning, like, like Keegan's saying, do it in an ag zone, is that something that you guys have discussed in your department? How would we, how would you like that kind of input from us? Does it need to go to our OMP? Give, give me some guidelines, or give us some guidelines as to how we can proceed and make use of our time.
Okay. Yeah, if you wanted us to look into those few components in that county ordinance that you mentioned, we can definitely bring forward some changes or some options for you to look at and review. I don't believe it would need to go back to Planning Commission at all, Taylor, if they wanted to make changes to what Planning Commission recommended, but.
No, they can make their own changes.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can definitely bring those forward and give you some options, give you some different looks. We did talk about, and I think Mark Heard mentioned it during our last meeting, but maybe creating a, a new overlay just for solar projects. So, that would take out the question of.
Didn't we look at, or didn't the Planning and Zoning look at that?
They did, because they didn't like the public infrastructure, but it didn't get very far. But I, I see that zoning things industrials, you know, zoning large parcels industrial that could stick to that land forever is a concern, and so in my mind, it seems a good idea to kind of narrow an overlay just for this type of facility. And it would still require the rezone to apply that, it would still be a legislative action, do you think, to consider on a case by case basis?
I mean, really, what we're saying on this, this is pretty much going in the agricultural areas, is what we're talking about. And I'd like to see what other counties have done when it comes into the agricultural area. Not so much the impact now, because the impact now is, hey, I got energy, that's great. Down the road, have we looked at what? Okay, we've got an industrial zone forty years, then none of us are sitting here forty years from now. If you are, you've served too long, so. But we need to take that into consideration.
Yeah, I believe one of our Planning Commissioners talked a lot about, you know, he travels back and forth across the state all the time, and he sees some of these larger ones and sees the impact, and it's not always sheep grazing or, you know, goats.
There's, they even mentioned there's some that are not working anymore.
Yeah.
And that's why our Planning and Zoning says, okay, there has to be a funding method, as they're in there to take that down, so that it doesn't.
Yeah, if they.
That's the decommission plan.
Yes. I like that decommission plan.
Yeah, I think they've.
They put a lot of thought into it, it's just industrial and how large.
Okay. Thanks, Angie, and we'll, we'll all do some research too. I'm thinking, I'm wondering if there's a resource that you have.
Angie?
Yes, Dave?
You know, we, we fought really hard for open space. We fought, we fought it on the, the premise, and that everyone wanted, that our, that our valley was so gorgeous. Our valley in everywhere that we went, we wanted these open areas, and we wanted these beautiful vistas, we wanted these beautiful areas. And the people voted for that, we even owe a lot, a certain amount of money, and we're doing our darndest to keep these spaces open. And I cannot, I cannot personally support this at all, in good conscience, to put a, to put, literally, change the beauty of our valley to the black hills, or black, you know, literally, the, the black shiny hills, you can call them that. I cannot, in good conscience, vote for that, to allow that anywhere in our county. That just, that just goes against my conscience as a, as a member of the council, and what we have fought for and maintained, and what we've tried to make sure that we keep in our valley.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Yeah, and that's another thing that we might want to consider as we, as we set up this code and set up these parameters, is because we've identified our gateways and our vistas as so important to the people in the county actually voted to put twenty million dollars towards that, that maybe even we restrict it to, you know, area, if we, you know, vote for something, that there be a restriction on the, the proximity to gateways and to some of those vistas that we have identified as being something we want to preserve. So, that's, that's another consideration.
Project that they're proposing would impact one of those gateways.
Yeah. Okay, all right, does someone want to make a motion to continue this?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, that we continue ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five.
And do we need that as a motion, Taylor, or do we just say we're not voting on it? It's still pending action, so you just leave it as pending. We just leave it as pending.
Disregard.
Okay, thanks. All right. Twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, Amy.
Twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six is for discussion for council member adjusted salaries. And so, if you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain those, but I think it's a discussion item for you to have.
I think that one, we wanted to just continue that one too, we're going to keep that one as pending.
Sounds great.
Okay, so we'll let, we'll move on to twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
So, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven is in compliance with the Utah State Code, that we needed to have a public hearing for any appointed officials of the county. We had that last week, yeah, actually, last week.
Last week.
It was just here. And then it was put before the council to review and vote on, and it was moved to this week. So, I'm here to answer any questions. I did notice that the updated copy is not in your media packet. The chief civil deputy attorney and the chief criminal deputy attorney, the pay ranges should both be the same, and it should be the one forty-seven as the minimum moving up, so, if you are to vote on that, if someone would please make that in their comment to adjust that, that would be great.
The low should be, but the high is right?
The high is correct, the minimum should be the one hundred forty-seven for both of those.
Okay.
There's one forty-two in there, I'm pulling it up right now.
The civil deputy is one forty-two.
One forty-two, okay.
Two.
And it needs to be one forty-six.
Yeah, that just didn't get updated in your media packet. Are there any questions that I can?
Do you want to have any questions for Amy about this?
Yes, I do, I, let me pull up my notes here. I did notice, I put this into a spreadsheet, and I did the floor and ceiling, and looked at the percentage increase for each of them. I think on average, it was about eight and a half percent. There were a couple that stood out. There were a couple that stood out. Um, the chief deputy executive increase is fifteen percent and the chief deputy auditor is twenty-four percent. So I just wondered why those ones um, were considerably higher than.
These are based off of the market values of the comparison groups that we compare to, um, and we've covered those comparison groups in previous meetings. I'm sorry, I don't, I mean, I could give you kind of off the top of my head of who we compared to, but it's second and third class counties and then also um, cities that are uh, throughout our valley and a few on the Wasatch Front and one in southern Utah. Anyway, so that, it's the mar, the market comparison. Um, one thing to note is that you're just voting that this pay range is okay, you're not voting on any specific pay increase for any individual.
Sure. But if someone doesn't hit the minimum, they would.
There would be a market adjustment that would be needed.
Sure.
Um, from my evaluation, I don't believe that any of the people that hold those positions are making below what the proposed minimum is.
Right. Um, so I guess the next question, the follow-up to that is, is it something we look at every year and did the market increase by that much or were we lagging behind in making those increases? Uh, maybe in the case of the auditor, that wasn't, that position wasn't there prior or is that?
So we look at this every year. Uh, we do a market study every year, the compensation committee reviews those, those numbers and then makes a recommendation. This is part of the recommendation that has come from the compensation committee.
Okay. So it is possible that comparably speaking, the chief deputy, deputy auditor did go up?
Correct.
Twenty-five percent?
Um, it is important to note that last year and the previous year, uh, the pay ranges were the same. They did not increase and if I believe right, that's just because the council did not approve the pay range increase with the market adjustments.
Okay, so maybe you recommend, I didn't look back, but maybe a recommendation was made, but then it wasn't followed.
Right, yeah.
So we got behind by.
Yes.
Not passing it.
Yes.
Can the council speak to that, is that?
Yes. We just, we just were so, we didn't get any raise, nobody got raises last year, none of the elected officials got raises.
Or the appointed.
So just to follow up on that, the eight and a half percent really represents.
Two years.
So it would be a three to five percent each year had we followed that.
Yeah.
Previous year.
Yeah.
Thanks. That, that sorts a lot of my questions out for me, yeah.
It's also important to note that in the media packet, um, what this resolution is looking at is just that section of the chief deputies and the department heads. It's not approving anything above, above that on the sheet, so keep that in mind.
No elected officials.
No elected officials, thank you for saying, that's a better way to say that.
Yeah, that, that vote already took place for everyone except the council.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I don't, I don't know, does anybody else have any other questions?
Well, you.
Okay, does some, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the, the ordinance, uh, twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, the compensation of the Kesh County Executive Appointed and Deputy Officials, um, changing the, amending the, oh, I just lost it.
Pay ranges.
The pay range for prosecute, chief, um, civil deputy attorney.
We need an amendment to go with that.
I think that's what she was just doing.
That's what I'm trying to do right now.
Okay.
Yeah, amending the, the chief civil deputy attorney to one forty-seven for twenty-two uh, for the minimum.
I will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven with the proposed amendment. Those, any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, I think we are getting there. Okay, USAC full workshop, are we all set up for that? Okay.
Yeah, it seems I'm tired.
I know. Okay, council member reports, Barbara.
Um, I don't know if you saw this, but Dave Erickson sent me, or sent out a, an announcement that the Farm Bureau was contributing four thousand pounds of meat to the food pantry tomorrow. And we're asking that a council member, and I think the executive be there if they could possibly make it, and I rearranged my schedule so I can be there for that at two o'clock.
Is it at the food pantry?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and um, I, I have some things I want to say, but I think I'm gonna save them till next time.
Okay, you're serious?
You may not wanna hear them.
It's the truth, I always wanna hear it.
Okay. Okay, thanks Barbara.
Uh, so I just have one, and I actually have a procedural question real quick. If I wanna email out that North Carolina example, as long as we don't discuss it, that's above board, right, just to share it? Okay, I'll send that out. Um, I just have one for COSAC, which is um, I requested they get on the agenda for the next meeting. Um, if you recall, they, they're gonna be requesting a modest amount to get the word out to those areas that fall within the scenic gateways, just to remind um, those parcel owners that they are potentially eligible for the program. Um, they'll share how they identify gateways, um, how many are on that list and the amounts that they're requesting. So, very modest amount, so I, I would encourage you to, to consider that. Um, and then also to follow up on the earlier solar discussion, they'll identify the, the gateway so we can see where, where that falls into.
Pardon me, but didn't we discuss as a council that we has, we had hesitancy of picking certain parcels of ground based on gateway because this is a tax that's paid by the whole county, but yet we're favoring or showing favor for certain pieces of ground?
I, I can speak to that if you want.
Yeah.
So um, there's some properties like mine that wouldn't even be eligible, for example. So the, the methodology they're using is that the, the voters who approve this bond um, are interested in preserving those gateways. There are only specific properties that fall within what the voters um, stated their desires were. And there's a concern that the, the property owners aren't, are unaware of this, and if they're unaware, then they can't really fulfill their obligation to the public to preserve those areas if there's no applicants. So that, that's the reasoning behind it. But yes, there was, there were two concerns, that was one of them and the other one was using funds to let people know about a free program. Um, so they're going to address both of those concerns and that was discussed.
Yeah, and I think it's a part of their scoring, you know, being a part of a gateway or the, is part of their scoring process too, so identifying what those are is um, I think that'll be helpful to us.
Yeah. Whether or not that resolves their concerns, that's a different matter, but they will attempt to address them.
Okay. All right, Nolan?
Um, Angie, did you get any responses? You sent out an email about a possible meeting, um, the next water meeting, we were looking at like November nineteenth or twentieth. The twentieth and twenty-first is USAC.
Mm-hmm.
So I wanna check, see if you guys are open for the nineteenth. Did any other things come back, Angie?
Yeah, I got three or four responses that they were good for either day, so since you have that constraint, I don't know if we need that.
The nineteenth, some of you have to be gone down to USAC. Yeah, I have to be at a board meeting at five o'clock. Yeah.
On nineteenth?
So does Dave. Yeah. On the nineteenth.
Thanks. Any other days pop up? Cause later, the next week is, that's out.
What about the eighteenth?
That's our council meeting.
I know, but could we not meet earlier in the day?
We're doing that truth and taxation open house.
Oh, that's right, never mind. The eighteenth is a bad day. What open house is that?
Oh, maybe we'll defer to the executive to talk about what he has planned for the truth and taxation open house.
Oh, yeah.
Two hours prior.
Yeah. Speak to.
Be happy to talk about that for a minute or two.
Sure. Uh, is that, is right now okay for him to talk about that?
Yeah, well, let's talk about this meeting for the, the water meeting, that's, that's, like, what about the Monday on the seventeenth?
We need to have it, so we need to find a date, cause our.
Well, could it wait till the week after that?
No, that's Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, but maybe Monday, that Monday, I know there's an appropriation meeting at three, but we could, um, I don't know.
And um, we do have an open space site visit on the seventeenth, it would be about three thirty. It does involve one type of pressure.
Oh, neat.
But about the twenty-fourth, that Monday?
Mondays are really hard for me.
Okay, and then Tuesday.
Fireboard meeting on Tuesday.
I'm leaving Tuesday for Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah.
Okay, well, you might just have to still hold it, um, if you did it on the nineteenth, it just means that Dave and I wouldn't be there.
I can't.
Can Andrew send out a poll and if we get a quorum, call it in?
We don't have to have a quorum.
No.
Oh, I guess we don't.
No. It's more of a workshop than anything else.
True.
It's not.
We probably want at least three people there.
Yeah.
Well, with the recommendations that were made last meeting, I think there needs to be some, you, either you're aware or we update you, cause.
Yeah, because I, I need to know what happened in that meeting on the thirtieth. I, I feel bad that I couldn't be there. And um, I would like to be able to be to the next one if possible.
I, on, also on the nineteenth, in that afternoon, I have a brag meeting, so.
Could it wait till December?
First week of December.
Might have to, unless, if we can't do it Monday, seventeen, Barbara can't do it Monday, how's that for the other council members, like the seventeenth or twenty-fourth?
I can do either of those days. We have appropriations on the twenty-fourth, but we could do it after appropriations.
Yeah, I could do the seventeenth.
Seventeenth would probably be better.
Can you send out a thing for the seventeenth if we make it happen? Sorry Barbara.
And I mean, it's a clock.
Or the twenty-fourth after appropriations.
Seventeenth or twenty-fourth, see what works, cause.
And we'd like it that late in the day?
That's because.
Or is that when people are most able to, but this is their day job, can they come during their job?
Well, but I'm bringing in like the state water division, the other guys, um, River Health, who have another job, so, just like us, so that's why it's, I mean, certainly put it in there, five-ish, I mean.
I just wondered if it was part of their day job, if this would be part of, of their work hours.
Well, I've got, I've got the planning and zoning guys, every one of them have a job, so.
Yeah, okay.
I'm asking them to leave work to come to a county meeting where they really don't get paid a whole lot.
Speaking of planning and zoning, I know the past couple of years, we've given them a box of candy for Christmas, do we want to continue to do that?
I think so, absolutely.
I wonder where we could get some really good candy?
Yeah.
Are, um, are they having planning and zoning this week on Thursday night?
Yes, we are.
That's this month's meeting?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so I had.
All right, Catherine?
Um, I was gonna ask um, the executive to speak in, to the truth and taxation open house that he had, I'd spoken to him this week about and I was gonna defer to him.
Yeah, give us some information.
What we're gonna try and do is, is teach people a little bit about how property taxes are computed, what the elements are, and then let them see exactly what's happening on our property taxes. It's, it's interesting that eighty or ninety percent of people perceive that their property taxes have been going up every year. It's not true.
Well, they have, but it hasn't been because of us.
Yeah, it hasn't been the county portion.
Well, actually, um, Sandy, even the whole tax bill hasn't been going up.
Cause people tell me their taxes have doubled in the last five years.
Yeah, I mean, I know Logan City's gone up a modest amount, for example.
I don't understand.
But it's gone up.
Yeah, but we gotta talk, we gotta talk the difference between residential and commercial taxation, cause right now it's the residences.
Yeah, we're.
It's the residences that are seeing the push up, aren't we?
Well, you, we're, we're going to talk about that, we're gonna throw up averages on the screen and then we're, the way we're actually setting it up to do is we're gonna have five or six county people being able to take a computer and show an individual their own personal tax bill and walk them through how it's computed in their thing. So that's, that's what we're gonna try and do. I am hopeful that we'll rotate through about three different sets of people over that three hour period, that we can kind of take the first group and run them through and then do it again and run them through. I can't imagine anybody's gonna stay for three hours and then come back for the truth and taxation hearing. But most people don't understand property tax. I have to confess, I had a general understanding of them, but I, I can just tell you, there is common misconceptions about property taxes and I think it will help us if we take the time to explain them to people.
I wonder if there's any, cause I've thought about this before, is there any way to encourage people to bring their property tax statement with them?
We can print it from here.
I know, but I mean, that takes a long time.
No, it doesn't. Actually, we, we got it to the point, if Kurt were here, we could demonstrate it on the screen, but we, we can pull up your taxes, Sandy. We've got a graph that immediately populates and we can talk, it's a minute.
Okay.
One minute or two minutes, we can have anybody's taxes, we can show them over five years or ten years, what's happened to the tax rate, their appraised value, the taxes they're paying. Nolan, did Kurt do this with you?
No.
Okay.
We talked about it, but there was no graph or anything else on there.
Okay. But we did it with you Catherine, didn't we? And we showed you.
I've, I've done mine, I, I've got mine, I've, I've looked at mine.
But I think you've been gone, Catherine.
Yeah, we did it with mine.
We were able to do it instantaneously with you.
Mm-hmm.
And you were surprised at, at your tax bill, weren't you?
Yeah, it had five dollar difference over the course of a few years.
Mm-hmm.
My county tax bill.
Yeah, I think this is such a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
I've heard and read several comments that people say their taxes is, have tripled and what they really mean is the value of their home has tripled and they have more equity to take out a HELOC and do a bunch of other things to leverage the equity, but the taxes have not gone up proportionally to that.
So George, what are we doing to get the, the word out to encourage people to come?
Well, we, we put a letter in everybody's tax notice.
About the open house?
About the open house, yeah.
Okay.
Now, there's a, a letter signed by me uh, in that inviting them to come. Um, I think we'll try and get the newspaper, who had left tonight already.
Might be out there.
Might be out there.
Yeah.
To say something about it. What else can we do?
Radio.
Radio. Jason Williams would probably like to interview you.
Yeah, I think he did do an interview a few weeks ago, I think he did a follow-up.
As long as they don't ask me when the bluebird's gonna open, I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to do anything. I, I think the critical thing is, is to have you understand the property tax so you can talk and if we use the same vocabulary, it will be helpful. Um, Matt, I.
But let's talk about that. So everybody says their taxes haven't gone up, but Wolfpack Way is a very good example of what we showed our citizens who have ground on Wolfpack Way because the value dramatically went up, which caused their taxes to go up because the value goes up. So there needs to be a relationship or an understanding about that, does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's what we're gonna try and explain.
Because I sat, I don't know how many during September, I sat on Wolfpack Way.
It's a really interesting thing about property taxes is they're detached from an understanding that they're, they're a percentage tax. So, you know, when you make more, if you make twice as much money.
I'm paying more taxes.
You're gonna pay more income taxes. If you go out and buy twice as many goods, you're gonna pay twice as much sales tax. The concept that your property goes up in value, well, your property taxes would go The concept that your property goes up in value, well, your property taxes would go up in value. Now, the truth is, we have lowered the, the levy rate twenty-six percent over the last five years. We, we've lowered the levy. If, if we stop lowering the levy and, and maintain the same percentage tax, our income will rise with the valuation, the tax valuation. Interestingly, last year, you advertised that you were gonna increase the tax rate by twenty percent.
Up to.
Up to twenty percent. You actually raised it twelve percent, but what you actually raised was not the levy rate, you raised the revenue that you were going to make by twelve percent. But when you looked at the levy, you only raised the levy four to five percent.
Including growth and, yeah.
But what the public heard is, my house is worth five hundred thousand dollars, my taxes are going up twenty percent, and that's how it was understood, even though that's not accurate, so this is why, this is such a valuable service and activity and.
Keegan, if we can accomplish it.
Yeah, so.
I, I'm sitting and writing it and trying it out on people, I, I've tried it out on several people. Had a really interesting discussion with Craig, the treasurer, about it. Um, we, he's saying, okay, if we raise taxes eighteen percent, my tax, they're gonna, your county portion of the tax are gonna go up eighteen percent. No, they're not, they're not, because you're going to have all of the new property that comes in and the increased appraisals. Many peoples are seeing their homes go up in value, but, you know, my home hasn't gone up in value in three or four years.
Well, and that's the part, I'm hoping the assessor's here, because I think any, any councilman who sat through those hearings, they come in and they're like, holy cr- whatever, my, my value has gone up a huge percent, not just what we see in CPI or inflation. So, we need to be able to differentiate how we're coming to that value and why we're coming to that value, and that comes to the state law, but I think peo- because we're right, we're saying, okay, your value went up, you're gonna pay more taxes. But a lot of times I'm hearing, but that value increase is unproportionate to what really should be talked about.
Give you three examples, and they're hitting me too. Uh, Dick Sackett comes in and says, this property has gone up in double.
Yes.
Okay, Dick, Dick didn't get into, he, he didn't file the request for a board of equalization in time. But I then said to Dick, well, Dick, this is that property that was out on South Main, right? Yeah. He says, it's gone up, it's, it's worth, raised it a hundred percent. And I looked at it, and it'd been raised, I said, well, so Dick, is the value that's on it now, would you sell it for that? No.
Yeah, you could sell it for more.
No. So, well, Dick, we're supposed to appraise things at market value, but how could the market value have doubled in one year? Well, Dick, let's assume that you're right, it didn't double in one year, but it is worth what you will say it's worth now. What you're really telling me is you got a real stealing deal last year because it wasn't high enough.
And the year before, and the year before that, probably.
Right, and, and that's what we're actually seeing, because most of the time, if you say to the person, I understand it went up, but is the value that's on it now market value? That's the real test.
And seeing when you're sitting in those hearings, most people will sit back and say, okay, I, I can see that, I mean, because we had to sit like on many places and say, okay, the street has been widened, or the access to your place has gone up. Or, I sat and listened to many of them on South Main Street, and you sit and talk about, okay, what's changing in South Main? It is becoming a commercial hub, and that is really increasing what's going around there. And, and when we sit and talk to them about it, so those people who come in get that, but I don't know how many percent of the people who come in, we're not getting that high of people that's recognizing that.
This is the guy that can do it. Kurt, can you go over there and just grab somebody's tax return and flip it up here and do what we're talking about?
Evaluation tax statement.
Andrew will let.
Can we dismiss Barbara?
Yes, yes, thank you, Barbara.
What do you want?
I want you to do what we're gonna do at the tax hearing, where you get somebody's taxes and throw them up.
Oh.
If, if we already get to that, I just wanna speak to the, what I think is happening in a lot of cases is an adjacent sale will happen that causes, it's the catalyst for reassessing the value of the nearby properties. And I believe the reason that's happening is because of our surveyor and their availability and, and our staff, and I think it's a reactive approach.
Yeah.
So, I don't think, a lot of people, when they point it out, it's like, well, your neighbor's property just sold for that, so do you disagree that yours is worth that? No, I don't disagree, it's just the lack of predictability.
It's a sticker shot.
So, I think one potential solution, and this is an executive function, that's why I bring it to you, is hiring a competent and capable surveyor that's proactively going out, so that we, instead of someone getting away with a lower cost for the last six years, it's incremental and it's fair, and the, the perception and the, the predictability is gonna be better.
We initially cut the assessor's request for commercial, new commercial appraiser out. We came back, we said, no, you find somebody, we'll hire them, because that's, we're actually losing money, Keegan, because.
I know.
We, we aren't, we, we, we should not be waiting that long. We shouldn't be on a five-year cycle on something like South Main.
And, and if we're paying a commercial appraiser a hundred thirty thousand, I guarantee if they're doing their job and being proactive, we're gonna bring more than that in assessed property value, so I just wanna indicate that that would be something I would be supportive of.
We, we need to get a county surveyor, and we need to get a couple of commercial appraisers, and we need another county engineer. Those are professionals we need in our system.
Are we getting any, are we getting any applications, Amy, on those?
I encourage, I, I came in and sat with, um, sat with Kurt and with the executive, and we went through multiple properties. I mean, Kurt was willing to show us his property, and, and, uh, we could very well illustrate the same principle. Yeah, you did, you gave me mine, yeah, you gave me a, you gave me a graph of mine, and it really, it illustrated the same principle really well. And I thought it prepared me to have a good conversation with constituents, um, at the open house, and I, I encourage anybody, if they can find the time, to come in and schedule time to sit with, with Kurt or both of them to try to do that.
Have a workshop. What I'd really like to do is run every one of you through it, look at the words we're using to describe the thing, so you use the same words. It just, it is so misunderstood, it's unbelievably.
I had three people out here, and I just happened to get in a conversation with them, I said, so you, so, did your taxes go up or down? And they said, oh, it's gone up terribly, and I said, ah, let's go see. So, I said, we actually went in the office, and every single one of them had gone down.
Really?
Just even.
And Kurt, you're talking their total tax.
I'm talking total taxes are down.
And they were shocked.
Oh, yeah, can you print that? I said, sure, here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, um, we, it behooves us to get the word out in any way we can, tech people come.
Can you flip up one of those charts on?
Yeah, because he, he doesn't have access. He doesn't have access.
We, I think the recommendation to do a pre-workshop workshop.
Yeah, what, what we're gonna do is.
But then we have to pause, we notice it, if you guys.
For us.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, I mean, we'd have to, if we're all gonna show them.
But, but the idea is, we're gonna try and train a bunch of people, so it can actually be done that way, that people can go look at their own taxes.
It's really eye-opening.
Eye-opening.
It really is.
Okay, I think that's a good idea, to have some of those computers set up and ready to show people.
So, so how would you guys like to approach it? Would you like to have a workshop with all of us, or have groups of two or three to come in with you, it's, and, and you show them, kinda like it was me and Dave, I think, that came in.
George, I, I have it in my mind, but kind of your show.
Maybe the rest of us need to get in touch with you guys individually.
I think the one or two would be great, and especially if, if someone comments or writes us an email, I'd love to invite, you know, bring a friend, so they can do mine and the person who is under that impression, and we can do it together and see.
My vision is those, taking a few, demonstrating it on the screen, anybody who's willing to have theirs shown, and if not, we can do it ourselves, use our own, and show them the graph, and then invite them to come and look at their own, and we'll.
Everybody's tax notice and their property value is public information.
I don't, I use mine, I don't care.
Yeah, it is all public.
But, but that doesn't mean you wanna necessarily throw it out in front of everybody, but.
Thank you.
Okay, but that was, I, I used mine to, to encourage, or reach out to Janine, how do you wanna do this?
Yeah, you'll set up appointments with Janine.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna make the presentation, and he's gonna run the, uh.
The computer.
I'm just finding this out.
The software. Matt runs the software, too.
People hear what they wanna hear, all they heard tonight was it's four dollars and eighty-one cents to keep the county library, and that, that five dollars is a good part, and so that's.
Well, I.
People hear what they wanna hear, sometimes.
There, a lady out there took names, probably only got about half the people, but she got names of the people that were out there, where they were from, whether they were willing to pay more in taxes to keep their library, and if they had any other ideas. It's, I laid it on the table in there, you can look at it.
Okay, all right, we set adjourned?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's adjourn this meeting.
Do you have a report?
Um, I've been gone for two and a half weeks, I don't even know where I'm at.
Oh, Dave, Eric's in the owl, hello, owl.
Yeah, Dave, do you have a council report for us?
Uh, yes, I do.
Okay.
Uh, first of all, I just go back to my topic, uh, I was wanting, it was very interesting here, is that one is the letter, so what's gone out with the property taxes? I had run into so many people that appreciated that letter, and they gained more understanding from that letter than they ever have in the property tax, when they got their property taxes. And they appreciated that letter, and it's a lot built, and they, they actually learned a lot from it. The other thing, uh, that I wanna bring up is, is tomorrow, uh, the money, what, what it was at the junior livestock sale this year, the Cash County Farm Bureau, they were willing to pay for the processing of all of the animals that would be donated by the buyers of the, was raised by all these youth. They were willing to pay for the processing, and that's what they did, and so, as buyers would donate animals to the Cash County Farm Bureau, they paid for the processing, had them processed, brought us all of it, and this is statewide, being done by the Utah Farm Bureau, but the portion that was bought specifically at Cash County is coming directly back to Cash County, and then taken down to the Cash County Food Pantry. And I think, I think that was a wonderful thing, you got two ton of meat that's coming back when it's mostly, and, uh, I'm hoping that we can have some people, I wish I could be there, but, uh, be there that, that helps support them in this effort. This is something I think is gonna grow really, really big for the food pantry.
I love that.
Is it two o'clock ceremony or something?
Yep, two o'clock.
Yes, yes, it is, two o'clock, Food Pantry, be there a little early. Dan Allen, he is the president of the Cash County Food Farm Bureau, went to school with him, good man. He'll be there, and he'll be happy to introduce himself, recognize, and he, I think he sent a text to some of you guys already, but, uh, whoever could be there, I think it'd be a great support.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sure.
Most, most favors Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You don't count. You don't count.